Welcome to the 2020 Sanford's Candidates Forum. My name is Sean Sullivan. I'll be one of your moderators this evening. I'm a York County Coast Star reporter and I'm joined by Tammy Wells, a local reporter for two coastal weekly newspapers. This is the segment that is going to focus on the Sanford City Council race. There are two three-year positions that are open and we have four candidates who have their eyes on them. They are the incumbents, Maura Hurley and Joseph Hanslip, and challengers and newcomers, Jonathan Martel and Nicholas Taylor. We're going to ask the four of you, first of all, thank you very much for being here. We appreciate you taking part in this forum and we have four questions for you this evening. Tammy and I came up with them. We actually consulted the publics and some of the questions kind of figure in directly or at least gave us an indication of what's on voters' minds. For each of these four questions, you'll have a minute and 30 seconds in which to answer. And then at the end of the questions, we'll have a closing statement. You'll be able to give your elevator pitch to voters and that will be two minutes. Just a little bit of a warning, we have a mute system built into this meeting. So once that clock ticks down to zero, it goes automatically to mute. So if you could keep one eye on the on the timing, we definitely wouldn't want you to not be able to say all you had come to say this evening. So let's see, for the first question, Tammy, you're up.
When it comes to the COVID-19 pandemic, do you feel the city has responded on target, has overreached its authority, or has not done enough? And we're going to start with Mr. Hanslip.
Thank you, Tammy. I believe that we are on target. Not every decision that we've made has been the right one. We've had to make some corrections, but I do not believe that we have overreached. And I think we've been on target, bearing in mind that the most important consideration is the health of the citizens of Sanford and Springvale.
Thank you. Ms. Hurley.
Sorry, I had to unmute. I don't regret the decisions I've had to make as the city council's regards COVID. I think in some respects, we may have not done it soon enough, but I think they were decisions we needed to make. The masking is not difficult to ask of anybody. The state has already asked for us to do it in stores of over 50,000 and we just asked that people do it in all stores within our community. I think when you're a city council, you have to realize that you are a city council for 22,000 people and you have to realize that sometimes the decisions you make do have impacts on a small group of people, but in essence, it's better for the 22,000. Over the past five, six weeks, we've had increases every week exponentially increasing. Nine cases one week, 14, 15, 31, 37. The new numbers for today are not out yet. The hardest decision was closing the parks and closing the playgrounds, but I think it was the right decision in the long run. We've had no sports at the high school. High school students are not in classes right now. We have had to go hybrid from K to four. We have cases now in a nursing home, which we had never had before. I think it was the right decision and I hope it's of short duration, but I think we need to stop gatherings. And one of the ways to stop gatherings unfortunately is closing some of the places where they can occur. And it was a tough decision, but sometimes that's what you have to do as a city councillor is think of the 22,000 people before anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martel.
Yes, I believe that A, the previous comment that there weren't any other cases in in nursing homes is incorrect. There were cases previously that I've heard of. I don't have that data in front of me. I do believe that it was overreach based on a lot of hearsay and rumblings on Facebook and having an emergency session with no public input, I think was was not fair and the wrong thing to do.
Thank you very much. Mr. Taylor.
I do believe that with the government, the city council has overreached. I do agree with the mask mandate for businesses where a person or where the community is going to be obviously in a tighter knit within six feet where it's harder to maintain social distancing. But I do not agree with the outdoor restrictions of closing parks. I feel that outdoors is an important part of the mental health of the community where everybody's been kind of, you know, boxed up and having to stay indoors since pretty much March. I think the opportunity to get out, get vitamin D, mingle while social distancing outdoors and fresh air is a very important aspect to us as a community. So I do not agree with that. I would like to see sports get back as soon as possible, but I think being outdoors should be a personal decision and everybody should get the chance to partake in outdoor activities if they so choose.
Thank you very much. Sean.
Excellent. Thank you. Question number two. How can Sanford market itself better here at home and beyond our borders? First up, Ms. Hurley.
I think the best way we can market ourselves is to have someone in a marketing position, which I've been advocating for, I don't know, I'd say two or three years that we've needed someone in marketing. We need to use social media better. I think we need to use the avenues of the internet better than we do in the city. It's kind of frustrating. I think we've been having the broadband installed for three or four years and during all that time, we could have been marketing that it was coming, especially once we received the federal funding and everything was locked in for the funding. Again, the city council is kind of finally circling the wagons and we've really been discussing marketing almost every chance we get at our meetings, especially in some of our subcommittee meetings. So marketing, it's hard. You're marketing a state that has high taxes, but you also remember, we always have to remember we're marketing a state that has a great quality of life and people are actually moving here and they love to live here, especially with COVID sadly, it's become a marketing tool. So I think Sanford needs to look to continue to do what we're doing, you know, improve our housing, improve our infrastructure and start getting out there about our broadband, about our, you know, beautiful fields and farms and trails and how close we are to Boston, Portsmouth, Portland, oceans, lakes and the mountains. And we can get there, but I think we need a marketing director. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Mr. Martel next.
Yes, I think Sanford is a great location. It's not very far from Portland, from Portsmouth, right near, it's not too far from the Turnpike. I think that Sanford needs to, as far as marketing, could definitely work on some of the crime and drug rates. And right now, we have a huge, what appears to be a homeless problem. I'm not sure what the best avenue is for that, but that's something that's been very visible within the last couple of years that I think would is a little bit detrimental to the image of the city. I think that getting the broadband squared away, which I've been hearing about for years and I think it's still being worked on, would would be definitely helpful for companies wanting to come in and especially with lots of people working remote these days and needing lots of some bandwidth for for data and for remote work. So I think we've got some work to do. I grew up in Sanford. I do enjoy it here and I hope that we can continue to improve the city.
Thank you, Mr. Martel. Next up, we have Mr. Taylor.
So I agree with the other two candidates that our location is a great marketing tool. Obviously, all the amenities around us, the big cities, the outdoor activities, the solar panel project we have going on, broadband was already mentioned. We have the, you know, developing commerce down at the airport in Bedford Airport closed. But I think, you know, updated school systems, all the tools are there, all the infrastructure is there. It's now a matter of putting out Sanford in a good light. I think the city council and the mayor have an opportunity to sell all of those things. I am concerned though, talking to business owners around Sanford, with the high planning costs that are associated with bringing businesses to Sanford. I know that doesn't help. Businesses are actually being told not to come to Sanford because of high costs. So I think we need to work on that. We need to make running a business or bringing a business or commerce to Sanford more attainable for small businesses. And I also believe that, you know, we just gotta continue to look at ways. Social media was mentioned. I'm the president of the ATV club and we had a post last week that got over 100,000 views across New England. So it's one of the things that, you know, social media is a great tool if used correctly. I'd like to see more of that from the city council, the mayor's office and the city as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Hanslip, you're up.
Thank you, Sean. I can agree with most of the suggestions that have been made. I think the key is to have a marketing director. We've had the Chamber of Commerce, we've had the Growth Council and other organizations, large and small, and individuals that have been helping to market us, but there has not been one individual person or group or office. And I think by getting a marketing director, others are certainly welcome to help, but by having a single marketing director, there will be expectations and accountability. And I think that's going to be the single best step that we can make towards more effective and efficient marketing. Sanford and Springvale have a great deal to offer and we need to let people know that.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Hanslip. Tammy, all yours.
What is the most important challenge that Sanford is facing and what steps must be taken to overcome it? Mr. Martel.
I think I think one of the biggest challenges is jobs in town. I've seen a lot of large companies left and I'm hoping that we can manage to pull in some some other larger companies to keep people like myself that have, you know, I'm a professional, but I have to drive outside the city to Portland or Portsmouth to find for a job and almost a lot of people in the city end up having to do the same thing. So I think getting more jobs in the city that are that are better paying, professional jobs and building the infrastructure like we like I talked about earlier and attracting companies to the city.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor.
Yes, ma'am. I believe that again, marketing, I think, was a great tool that's going to help the business and economy of Sanford. So I want to focus on a different issue, which I think is the homelessness caused by substance abuse in Sanford. I really think that Sanford needs to find some space to develop a resource center where personnel can come get resources, use a phone, find out what's available, what programs are available for the homeless. The one thing I have learned about, you know, moving to Sanford after I got out of the Navy was that this community really cares. They're very caring, they're very giving, they want to help one another, which is one of the reasons I actually moved here when I got out of the Navy, because I love the community and I love the people. But taking a police officer right now offline and pretty much making it his full-time job to assist the homeless, I don't think is the best effort that Sanford can take. They should find some city space. I recently saw a post about collection of tents for homeless for a Maine winter. I definitely don't think that's the right answer. And to address kind of the root problem, which was the substance abuse, I think Sanford needs to come up with a better way to help with substance abuse, help with recovery programs and obviously law enforcement associated with drug use. I think that's a lot of the stuff that the biggest issue Sanford has to be able to tackle and which will obviously help the marketability as well.
Thank you. Mr. Hanslip.
Thank you, Tammy. I think the single most important issue that's facing the city council right now, that's facing the city, is the COVID-19. I think we need to continue to be innovative in our response, in our preparation, and I think we also need to be planning for the recovery, the recovery of businesses, the recovery of organizations, youth athletics and others, and obviously the school. But I'm not generally a negative person and I don't think I am in saying this, but as far as the COVID-19, we still don't know what we don't know. So I think we have to be really vigilant and be prepared to make new decisions, to revisit the policies that are currently in place. We need we need to be prepared and we need to act quickly.
Thank you. Ms. Hurley.
Yes. The challenges facing, one of the things, other than the state, I want to let people know, I think one of the biggest challenges that we do, we are in the state of made, it is difficult to do business here, but it's still a place that people love to do business. I think one of the biggest challenges we challenges we have is the housing in our community. I remember once when I was first on the city council, Charlie Colgan came down to speak with us and we were all excited. We wanted retail. How do we bring retail here? How do we bring jobs here? And the comment from him was, it's not the community that they come to, it's the people they come to. So I think some of the challenges that have always faced Sanford is making sure we have good quality of housing and to bring good quality of people, we need to raise the attainment of education levels for the residents so that, you know, we see a lot more bachelor's or associate's degrees amongst our residents because once they start to see that quality of of level of education, quality of housing, the things that they want their workers to have, businesses look to that and that's how businesses choose locations. And that I found was very interesting from his commentary. And the funny thing is that following that, Charlie has made a comment that said, and after that, then you start to get the quality of life things, you get the retail shopping, you get the you get the renovations of your downtown. Everything starts to come together to serve the people that have moved there and that are making it their home. So I really think that the more we focus on housing, the more we focus on education and continue to work on the things that businesses will want once they get here, the more we're going to attain. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Question number four. Tammy and I ask this one every year. To the incumbents, please provide us with an example of a time when you feel you erred, where you made a mistake during your service as a city councillor, and please tell us what you learned from that experience. And to the challengers, please give us an example of a time when the incumbents actually shined in their roles and cast a vote or advocated on an issue in ways that you felt was for the best interest of our community. Let's see. Mr. Taylor gets this one first.
Wonderful question, wonderful question. Looking at the city council, now is it to the city council or is it to those running?
I would say the incumbents.
Specifically, I don't know how they voted in the past. I'll stick with COVID-19. I said that I thought that it was a very tough decision to obviously go with the mask mandate. It takes a strong leadership group. The vote on that was seven zero to do the mask mandate within businesses. I know that was an unfavorable decision that they had to make, but I think it was one that drives respect from the community to make sure everybody remains safe in businesses and help the community come through, come through the issues. So I commend them for that. I commend the entire city council for being able to make that tough decision in a time that we needed it, I think, most when Sanford was becoming a hotspot.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Hanslip, the incumbent question for you.
If I had to point to one vote that I took that I wished I hadn't, that I, something that I supported, that I wished I did not, it would have been the development of Oxford Aviation down at the airport. The experts, the people that rolled out the dog and pony show, it was going to be wonderful for Sanford. I was excited about it because I think for years and years, the Sanford Airport has been a jewel in the rough when it comes to economic development. My gut told me that there was something wrong, that what was being offered by Oxford Aviation was too good to be true and could not be done as they laid it out. And that is ultimately what happened and I should have followed my gut.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hanslip. And Ms. Hurley, also for you, the incumbent question.
You know, I think one of the hardest decisions and one of the things I regret today because I think it put us behind was a combination of city council decision and Sanford Downtown legacy decision, which I served on that committee. I think when the economy took a turn and when the city was looking for funding, I think making the decision as an SDL not to ask for the money and as the city councillor not to approve money for the downtown work that we were doing at that time was a huge mistake. I think when you you lose momentum in downtown work and in downtown revitalization, I think it has extreme negative consequences. Repairing and revitalizing a downtown in a community, as many people who know a part of downtowns, is just like putting a large business into your community. You have a bunch of small businesses. When added up with the employment and the activity and the services they provide, provide more actually more economic gain to a community than do does a large business out in the industrial park. They pay good taxes, they give good jobs and they tend to be more generous with their donations to the community. So I think probably the decision I regret the most is pulling away from asking for the funding and at the same time, not demanding that funding as a city councillor because I think as we're getting back into the work on the downtown now, I feel like a little bit like we're starting over and we had put so much effort into it before the recession hit and we were doing very well with all of our programs and activities. I wish we had continued right through the recession and we'd be in a great place right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Martel, the challenger question.
Yes, I don't think I can speak to any specific votes for either of the incumbents. I will say that I do appreciate some of the revitalization of the parks in town and whether they had involvement with that, I can't say for sure, but that's one thing I've enjoyed, like the number one pond park and the waterfall lighting, that's nice to go visit at night. So I've enjoyed that.
Thank you very much. Tammy.
Folks, you each get two minutes to give us the reasons why folks out there should vote for you on November 3rd. And we are going to start with Mr. Hanslip.
Thank you, Tammy. Remind me to do something nice for you someday. It's been an honor and a pleasure and that sounds kind of canned and it really isn't. I love being involved in Sanford. I love my time serving on the city council and it has been a pleasure to serve Sanford and Springvale for these last 15 years. I've been drawn to public service since I was a child and have served as a call firefighter, police officer, and have held various selected and appointed officers. I also worked part-time in my family's business, so I'm well aware of what a municipality can do to attract and retain businesses of all types. I have loved Sanford and Springvale for 40 years since I first came here and enrolled at Masson College. In my time on the council, we have had a variety of circumstances from floods and other natural disasters, poverty, derelict properties, ongoing homelessness issues and the need to trim budgets mid-year because of revenue shortfalls. These are all difficult situations and difficult decisions. We have worked hard to improve and maintain infrastructure, roads and municipal buildings, parks. We respond to citizens' needs. We are not always successful, but we try. Some of our recent successes are broadband, solar arrays, the new high school, the athletic fields, the state-of-the-art performing arts center, upgrades to the airport and attracting new businesses. The COVID pandemic and the city's response has taken untold hours for employees and elected officials and a lot of hard work.
Okay, sorry. Another bar popped up in front of it. Thank you. Thank you. I know how much work this is. I've done this every few years when I'm not running for office and I think this has been a monumental year to be doing this this evening. So I thank you all for taking part tonight. I've served on the city's council on and off since 2004. In that time, I think I get to look at it with perspective and I know how far we've come since 2004. I know some people like to think that things don't change, but there has been so much. I look at the airport and I see what it was back in 2004 and I see what it is today. We really have done a lot of monumental work and and prepared the community, even in the midst of one recession and potentially going into another with COVID. We've done a lot of work in this community. I love this community and I'm happy to be doing this work. I like to look forward to what I see in Sanford's future. I mentioned housing this evening. I think it's really important and critical that we work on our housing and continue to provide good housing for people and attract people to our community who will be the backbone of our community into the future. We have two great amazing housing projects that are in the works and hopefully those will continue and start very shortly beyond the new year. We're again starting to dive into our downtown. We have a great project that we're planning in the Midtown Mall next year and we're hoping that leads to the roadwork, which we're already starting to plan through the downtown. We're going to be doing some side roads this year and really making our downtown a welcome environment. As I mentioned, it's an economic boon to any community. I really am proud to be a member of this community. I think some of the other, my fellow candidates tonight have mentioned this. Sanford's a great place. It has a lot of potential in its downtown, lots of lands for growth. We have one of the best high schools in the state, the best ballpark in New England. We're less than 30 minutes from lakes and oceans, an hour from Portland and Portsmouth and so close to Boston. Even though we love to bicker and fight on Facebook, I think we all tend to bond together to protect this community when we need to. So I hope you, I hope for your vote in a few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martel.
Yes, I grew up in Sanford. I've lived here most of my life, except for when I was at college. I've had to commute for most of my working career, but I love it here. I plan to stay here. I'm fiscally conservative and I'm concerned with some of the spending that's that's happened in the last years that I've been here. I've seen a lot of what looks, what appears to be waste. And so I figured I can I can complain about it or I can try to get involved. So that's the reason I'm running.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor.
Okay, there we go.
There you go.
No, I want to thank everybody who put this together and the other candidates for coming on tonight, Brett and his crew behind the scenes. But, you know, I decided to run for city council because I've been dealing with the city council for the past three years as the ATV club, one officer of the ATV club. And after looking at it and talking to business owners that have been, you know, supporting the ATV club, I've recognized that there's a need for change in Sanford. I think we need to change just to make sure that we prepare ourselves for the future. I do believe that the city council has done a lot of great things to get us here, but unfortunately, times have changed and we got to look forward. I have an 11-year-old and a 13-year-old son in Sanford School Systems and, you know, I want this place and I want Sanford to be a great community for them to grow up in. I've been part of and led many diverse themes in my professional and personal life. I was in the Navy for five years. I've been a federal manager now for 10 with federal service at about 16 years. So I've been a part of a lot of diverse groups. I look forward to helping Sanford, hopefully as the city council into the future. And I appreciate everybody's time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean. Sean, unmute. Sean.
There we go. That's what that was that flashed on my screen a few moments ago. This concludes the Sanford City Council segment of our 2020 Sanford Candidates Forum. I want to thank the four candidates, the incumbents and the challengers for coming out tonight to participate. We greatly appreciate your time and partake We greatly appreciate your time and partaking in this different format than we're used to. Hopefully, next year, things will be back to normal, and we'll be in our usual venue. Couple of things before we go. People to thank. Tammy, thank you very much for co-moderating. Brett Williams, the director of the Sanford Performing Arts Center. He has been in charge as the audio engineer this evening. Sarah Schnell, our manager at WSSR-TV at the high school. She also has been helping to produce this segment technically. We have Paul Ogier, speaking of the high school. He's a history teacher there and a local historian, and he's kept the trains running on time as our timekeeper this year. Thank you very much, Paul. And then, last but not least, we have city councillor Anne Hanselman, who organized this whole thing, this whole thing, six segments, even more races, as many as 19 or 20 candidates, and all sorts of stuff. So Anne has done a wonderful job during an extraordinary year, under extraordinary circumstances, and Anne, we are grateful. Thank you very much. Before I go, just want to remind you, we all do, vote on Tuesday, November 3rd. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Take care.
Have a nice evening.